Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much. During proceedings tonight, we have Captain Brian Miles from the South East Army. Stay proud.
Shall we pray? Look, we just thank you for the country we live in, for the freedoms that we have. We ask that you'll be with us now in the deliberations that are made, that they may be considered with wisdom and thought. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal Committee as traditional custodians of the label meeting on tonight, paying respects to the elders present. And also remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually. It will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. Clear the meeting open, and note that Alderman Cusick is on leave, and we're expecting Alderman MacFarlane very shortly, I believe. There's nothing to report at item three. Item two is confirmation minutes for 25th of September, as circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. Alderman here is first, seconded Alderman Von Berto. Thank you. All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Item four, council notes the workshops conducted on the 2nd and 9th of October and the agenda briefing on the 13th. Thank you, Alderman MacFarlane, seconded Alderman Thirley. All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associates. There being none. Item six, taving of petitions. There are none on the agenda. Are there any from the floor? Thank you. Item seven is public question time, and there are no matters on notice. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Thank you. Item eight is deputations by members of the public. And as they call for it, I need to remind you that under meeting regulations, we can only provide a three-minute window, and there'll be a warning sound at two and a half minutes so that you can wind up. Thank you. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First speaker this evening is Mr Greg Steinbauer of Lordordale, who wishes to address council in relation to the Roaches Beach access and DDA ramp safety issues. Come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Steinbauer, and I live in Lordordale, and I've lived in the area for nearly fifteen years. I would like to speak to you about the recent council work at the eastern end of Lordordale Canal, and specifically about closing the beach access at Roaches Beach. I'm here to ensure that you understand the significant issues of water safety and the risk to life that closing this amenity has caused. The beach access has been an important part of Lordordale residents' lives since the canal was closed in 1927. Every summer, people flock to Roaches Beach due to its calm, family-friendly waters. However, as with many water-based activities, our beach can be a place of great danger. Tasmania's weather can and does change within minutes. People can and do get caught in situations where lives can be put at risk. Only fourteen months ago, poor men set out from Crumore Boat Ramp and lost their lives in a boating tragedy. With Tasmania sitting second in the nation for drownings, safety on our beaches should be our number-one priority. The beach access has been a vital link to saving people's lives. Our beach has also seen tragedy, with the loss of one person's life in a boating accident. Fortunately, two others were saved that day. I myself has performed three separate spontaneous rescues of people who have found themselves in imminent danger, over a small five-metre runabout from which these rescues were performed. Without the beach access, all three of these could have had a very sad outcome. With more and more people arriving at the beach with a variety of inflatable and personal water toys, the risk to people venturing too far from shore and being taken by the wind is a real danger this summer. The beach access has provided an unwritten, zero-cost insurance policy to the wider community for many years. Unfortunately, that insurance policy has now been cancelled by Clarence City Council at a cost-to-rate pose of $187,000. The cancellation fee was used to install a DDA ramp that currently provides no benefit to residents that the old beach access didn't already facilitate. Its design only caters for foot traffic, and the days of launching a power vessel are gone. Even today, it is still not open for general use. Our DDA ramp has been called many things by locals in recent times, however, fit-for-purpose is not one of them. Its design and materials used in its construction are far from adequate for its intended purpose or its environment. Notably, the use of chicken wire is a non-skid surface. This product may be fine for bushwalkers on the overland track who wear bushwalking boots, but not for small children. With summer fast approaching, I'm concerned that our beach will become a scene of regrettable slash preventable incident, one that could be averted if the beach access were still in place. A prominent Tasmanian maritime industry person once asked me the following question: "Greg, what price do you put on safety?" It took me a minute to answer, but of course, the answer is priceless. I'm sure that the family and friends of people who venture to the beach would say the same. Lordordale has lost part of its history, part of its lifestyle, and most importantly, a key part of safety feature that we have had for many years.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I do need to ask you, as members of the public, not to engage in either cheering or booing any of the speakers. This chamber, it's very important that we can debate the issues as they come up at this time without fear of failure. So could you please respect that?
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Kimbra Fitzmaurice, also of Lordordale, who wishes to address council in respect of the same issue.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Mr Deputy Mayor, and Alderman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly to you tonight on this issue. The issue that has prompted my desire to present here tonight has been the ongoing saga of the closure of the beach access at Roaches Beach. I'm not one to make assertions or representations without doing my homework, and as such, I've spent many hours in the past eleven weeks trawling through council reports, policies, and minutes, and have had many conversations with other residents of the municipality. Council's own minutes, the 30th of September 2013, indicate that the technical reports advised fortifying the size of the existing access with sandbags or rocks. Council recommended and preferred closure, or do nothing. I'm still yet to find any evidence anywhere of a sound recommendation to close the beach access. I thought I may have overlooked something and specifically requested information regarding this. To date, nothing has been supplied, which brings me to the first issue I'd like to address: communication. I refer to the Clarence Community Participation Policy 2010, and wish to highlight the following: The council wishes to create an environment of clear, honest, and timely communication when engaging with the community and projects about projects and activities. There are three specific moments of communication throughout this project which are worthy of mentioning here now. The first is the survey. The survey that was conducted of Lordordale residents approximately five years ago. In my opinion, it was appalling, vague, nondescript, inappropriate questions with a very poor response rate. Nowhere on this survey was there mention of closing the beach access. I assert that if the survey had been of better quality, the response rate would have been higher. I also point out that this survey was conducted five years ago. We were fortunate enough to be able to complete the survey and participate in this activity, unlike anyone who may have moved into the area in more recent times. After a five-year lapse, are the survey responses even still relevant? This process was not clear, timely, or transparent. The second issue is in relation to the notification. We received a letter from the council on the 27th of July. This letter was dated the 25th of July, notifying us that the beach access would be closed on the 26th of July. That is, a day earlier than the letter was received. This is not timely. Thirdly is the response. I question the Alderman how many emails, letters, visits, and phone calls have been made in the past eleven weeks in relation to this issue, and how many have been responded to. I suggest not many. Council has not complied with its own communication policy in relation to this entire debacle. The second issue I'd like to raise relates to health and livability. The council's Community Health and Wellbeing Plan has five broad areas of focus, three of which have been ignored in this process: enhancing livability, promoting health, and promoting and enhancing safety. I will summarise now and say that my own ability to exercise has been reduced by the closure of the ramp. I now have less access to the beach. And also, it needs to be pointed out that the Booper Kid Fit Triathlon is now in jeopardy. It may not be able to be conducted at that same site because the people involved in that weren't even consulted. I myself notified them that the access had been closed.
Sorry, we're out of time, but thank you very much.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Gillian Green of Lordordale, who also wishes to address council in respect of this matter.
Good evening, everybody. I am Gillian Green, long-term resident of Lordordale and not a public speaker. Again, I want to address the closure of the boat access, but not for talking about getting boats in there. We've addressed all of that. My main concern is coming from my husband, who is a local police officer down at Clarence Plains, and they were not consulted about the closure of this boat ramp. So basically, what it has actually said now is that you can't get a police vehicle or an emergency vehicle onto the beach. Now, as much as, you know, hopefully, we never have to actually utilise that, time-critical response is very important when it comes to getting, you know, people, like police and ambulances, onto the beach. It's not just for drowning. You've got sometimes a vicious dog on there. You've got people having heart attacks and strokes and falling. You've got jet skis that are too close to people that are out in the water, and they've got to be moved on. You do have the occasional undesirable. You do have sexual assaults, kids out there with bonfires, kids out there drinking. It does all happen, like, you know, it might not happen in our world, but it happens in the police world. And Sergeant Bruce Henderson of Clarence Plains, he's been there for a very long time, was never consulted about the closure of the access. And now, if anything is required and the police are called, they have to park their car, grab their radio, defibrillators, first aid kit, whatever is required, and run up and over. So that is my first issue. And when it comes to things like drowning, yes, time-critical is very, very important to get emergency services down there. The other thing I actually wanted to bring up was, it has been cited that the boat ramp was closed because of inundation back in the hundred-year storm back in 2012. My husband and I actually went to that two-day workshop that was held, plus the evening session, and to discuss what we can do to help the fact that Lordordale was being swamped. We discussed things like floating roads, floating houses, aguains, bluestone rocks being put along there for sea wall, a promenade, a pathway, reinstatement of the sand, and that in itself was an issue because captive wildlife own half the beach, so the reinstatement that happened five years ago only went halfway along the beach, and that hasn't happened since. There were experts and scientists at this meeting, and I went back through my notes, and at no stage was it mentioned about the closing of the boat ramp. It was mentioned that the inundation was coming from the canal side, and that hence that we've got a road that's falling apart between Hill Street and Sanford that needs to be looked at. Jock and Doug took home a whole lot, or everybody took home, all these sheets of paper with all our contact details on there, and not once have I been contacted or my husband contacted about any follow-up from this two-day workshop that we went on. From the notes that I've had, and just from what I'm saying today, I just implore you that you consider the reinstatement of the police ramp for safety, as well as everything else that I've just discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr John Stevens of Gilston Bay, who wishes to address council in relation to a proposed development application at 78 Gilston Bay Road.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Alderman, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. As I say, I'd like to talk about the application for visitor accommodation at 78 Gilston Bay Road. We'd like to commend the planning officer's report on this assessment. We think it's very thorough, and we hope that the council will follow their recommendation for refusal. Councils had an interest in this area dating back to 1993, when it produced the comprehensive and thorough Government Hills Local Area Plan. This plan recognised that the area represented one of the few relatively natural regions of bush within the city environs. We suggest that this proposed development is too intensive for the site, given its scale, visual impact, impact to native flora and fauna, and traffic generation. 78 Gilston Bay Road is one of two lots on the southern side of Fisher's Hill, which is its own environmental living zone, ELZ. The ELZ allows for only one residential dwelling on each lot. Visitor accommodation is permitted use. However, according to the zone requirements, it should be contained within one building with a floor area not greater than 300 square metres. However, the proposed development is for fifteen cabins and a house, and a combined floor area of some 1,400 square metres. Therefore, the council must exercise its discretion and assess the proposal against the ELZ zone purpose statements, and must show that it is of a scale that prospects the character and use of the area. The proposed development for visitor accommodation is a fifteen-fold increase in building coverage over that currently existing. We consider it will have a major impact on the seclusion and amenity of the area. In conclusion, we consider that this development would involve a scale and intensity of use significantly different from what's going on there at the moment, from what's occurring there at the moment. And we would urge you to reject this development, which is inappropriate and harmful for the area. Thank you very much.
No further speakers. Thank you. Item nine, 9.1, no summation, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As listed on the agenda...
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Pearce?
Yep. I would like to seek leave to include an extra reference after the words on the agenda: "A report to be provided to council by officers by the 30th of November informing council to which the above options is the most feasible to pursue." And this handout from Alderman Von Berto, which says: "A request for an officer's report which considers the rectification of the use and safety communities' concerns of the current ramp, including costs and options." And also, it reads on: "The legal insurance costs related to the opening of the dune, which council previously resolved to be created." And thirdly, whether the April 2018 date may be affected by the need for the Crown approval of any council decision.
So I take it it's the motion as stands, plus what you've just read out?
If the second would be... Paul Alderman has been circulated this earlier today, so I would seek seconders' conduct...
You've got that, if you could just table it with the secretary, please.
I only want to speak in relation to what has been discussed by the residents, and also to by a number of representations to the council over the last few weeks. And also, there was a meeting at Lordordale Canal a couple of weeks ago, where, I think it was around about eighty to a hundred people, Mr Mayor, you probably need confirmation of that, but it was in that number, where there was some concern expressed in relation to the process by which the actual walkway that's been constructed, how it came about, and also to what in fact was covered in the TCAP. And the other two reports that I understand were done by a mainland company, I think it's SRL Proprietary Limited or WRL, beg your pardon, WRL Proprietary Limited did undertake. And hence, there's been a lot of discussion in relation to this, particularly as to whether or not those reports were quite specific, Mr Mayor, in saying that the beach access, that the head of Lordordale Canal should be closed. This particular motion, together with the other comments that have been added to the motion for the officers to follow up on by the 30th of November, I think will shed enough light on the matter, and also to provide enough information for us to make a decision, hopefully as soon as possible, to either reopen at the current, where the access was, alternatively to the north of the closed section of the canal, of the beach access of the canal, or up to the southern end. So having said that, Mr Mayor, I would probably like to say no more, perhaps colour in the right of reply, anything else that may crop up. But leave it to my colleagues to perhaps discuss those other ramifications that have been added to the motion at this time.
Hey, can I confirm that everyone's got a copy of what's being proposed, Mr Mayor? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Alderman James has summed it up pretty well. I went down and had a look at the site. I couldn't, I did apologise because I couldn't attend that important meeting that day. But yes, something needs to be done. I'm very pleased that Alderman Von Berto's comments have been included in the motion because I think they're very important. I'm happy to support the people of Lordordale that want something different. I went down and had a look, and I agree. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect for everybody, but I agree something needs to be done. I think it can be slightly better done than certainly is at the moment. This report will come back to us, and I think that's, and all those questions will be answered. Then we know where we stand, even legally and insurance-wise as well. I think Gillian Green said that she attended those workshops many, like, five years ago, and I did too, and I remember they had a night meeting. But I remember at that meeting that some people criticised us for not doing enough and for taking houses more than butts, and I can remember we got a bit of a caning there. So in a sense, we've probably gone overboard this time, and probably done, so let's, you know, try to compromise, and let's try to get something that appeases everybody, so people can, you know, have their boats, their recreation area, but, you know, we're also very mindful to protecting the dunes, et cetera, et cetera, and houses, which I also think's very important. I did go down there to have a look at Lordordale the same time I went down at Crumore. And I must say, at Crumore, the tide was right up, so I actually did my second trip back to Lordordale, and I've got to say, the canal, the tide was running too, and it does concern me a little bit. We've got electric barbecues, and that water was right up virtually to the barbecues. Now, maybe that's something that just needs to be looked at as well.
Next, Alderman Pearce. Alderman here.
I also went to the meeting, the public meeting that you and Alderman Walker and Alderman James attended. I must say, I found that meeting very enlightening. I, you know, it made me reflect on the situation there, and I mean, I agree with the motion. I think we need to have that report prepared to look at the options for access. One of the issues that also needs to be looked into is, you know, is dune restoration really needed along that section? Because one of the things that was pointed out to me, that I, you know, you realise it better when you're on the site, is that at the end of the canal where the boat ramp was situated, there's actually a dip in the road. And if there was an inundation at that section, and that particular section wasn't protected, it doesn't necessarily threaten the houses on either side. Now, I'm looking at that from a layman's perspective. I would like to see what the expert advice says on that, but from a layman's perspective, it appears that there isn't a need to protect just that section because there are no houses threatened. So, you know, if we can get an expert to look at that and say, well, you know, what happens if we leave that section unprotected? You know, does it actually threaten the houses on either side? But looking at it from a layman's perspective, it doesn't appear that it would. But the final point I'd like to make is, I think some very good points were made by Ms Fitzmaurice in her representation on the consultation process, and on the fact that the community appears to have been blindsided by this. And I think that that's something that we as a council really need to consider and reflect on, in that, you know, there really wasn't any expectation to see this coming. We need to look at the design of our consultations and really reflect on how we better engage the community on these sort of decisions. Thank you.
Other speakers. Alderman Thirley?
Mr Mayor, I think this is a really great example of where the community has actually come to the fore and instigated council to actually have to rethink this. One of the disappointing things for me is that if DDA access is provided, and it's not as good a DDA access as we would like, why is there not access for all? I don't think you should have one without the other. Everything is about creating access for everyone, not just DDA compliant. So it has, any facility, any infrastructure that's provided for council has to be fit for purpose. And I often say this, that it meets certain standards or it meets certain guidelines, but it's unusable, and it's not actually practical, and it's not actually serving the purpose. So that's one aspect I'm really worried about. But I think this is an example where a council decision has been analysed, and the opportunity to revoke it is a distinct possibility.
Other speakers. Alderman MacFarlane?
Well, I'd like to speak in defence of council's processes at times. We had a good rendition tonight on how long it takes for some of our processes to actually get to the place. At this point in time, I'm quite happy for some changes to be made, but the bulk ideology behind closing the canal was climate change information that should be out there in the community. I don't remember the date of that last storm, which cut metres of sand away from people's yards. It lifted the concrete steps at Bayview Drive End. It cut away into nearly the foundations of another house at the other end of Roaches Beach. And with what scientific knowledge is accepted by certain areas of the community and councils across Australia is that those types of storms are going to get worse. I had phone calls, I did a lot of Alderman, at two o'clock in the morning, from people screaming in terror at what was occurring. And the next day, I went down there, luckily with my dog, stupidly looked over some dune edge and nearly fell in the water, which was terrifying, because I'm not an active person, but I could not have coped with the degree of water sweeping out and the death of fall on the dunes. Now, that occurred in forty-eight hours. And those are the sorts of things that we as a council take on board in future planning. So I'm hoping the community will take on board the fact that we have worked towards the benefit of the community. There is always an ability for council to change the plans. I acknowledge the fact that the DDA access is practically non-compliant, but there are mechanisms by which we could, you know, put forward an area for dinghies to get through, but not be offloaded from a trailer, for instance, because that area is an inundation zone. Once that water starts to collect, we're going to have real problems in the future putting those dunes back in place. That is the problem, the long-term problem for council, that the community need to realise is what we're working towards, and it's not just about making their lives difficult. However, there have been other occasions where we've... However, there have been other occasions where we've closed off access to beaches. Again, people like myself have mentioned the fact that we need to access beaches for boats to go out for sea rescue, and council has created other accesses, and Seven Mile Beach is one of them, so that the boats could access the water from a different spot. So these are the options we will be looking at in the new report. And the thing that I am really thrilled about is that we have had this input from members of the community who have lived there for a long time and understand the local area. So I'm hoping that those people will participate in our review.
Alderman McFarlane, other speakers? Alderman Von Berta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to preface what I'm going to say with the fact that on the 17th of March 2014, I actually voted against closing the access. From memory, I believe I was the only Alderman to do so. And I did that for a number of reasons. The primary reason was that I actually believe, and have been consistent in this belief, that the state government is remiss in looking at and supporting, both from a policy perspective and financially, adaptation in relation to climate change, particularly in relation to climate change related to erosion and inundation. And this particular piece of land is, which is actually state government land. My understanding is that it is leased by council, but it is still state government land. So that was my primary reason for actually making an in-principle stand, as far as this is concerned. I also had issues in relation to what we were going to do and why we were going to do it, and what ramifications that might have for the community. In an email that we received from Mr. Steinbauer, it makes it very clear that on the 30th of September 2013, there was an agenda report where it was noted that the University of New South Wales Water Resource Laboratory had actually put forward recommendations in relation to this area. And those recommendations were to armour the sides of the existing access with rock or armour the sides of the existing access with sand-built geotextile bags. So not to actually fill the area in. So I think that's something that we need to keep in mind because between that date, that council meeting, and the one on the 17th of March 2014, so a few months later, we were actually looking at something quite different. I've actually sent an email today to all of the Aldermen, in particular to Alderman James, because he was actually putting this motion on behalf of Alderman Cusick. And what I've actually said is that some of the matters that I believe the motion needs to cover are, and Alderman James has actually gone through those, and they've now been included in the motion, a request for an officer's report which considers the rectification of the youth's safety that community concerns have actually brought up as far as the current ramp is concerned. Because I was unable to actually meet or go to the public meeting on the 7th of October, but I have met with Mr. Steinbauer and with Fitzmaurice and some other people actually at the site. And so I'm very well aware of their concerns, and I think that a number of those concerns need to actually be looked at. They are very reasonable concerns. So as I say, I think we need to have an officer's report in relation to the current ramp and the safety issue, and that needs to include the costs of actually rectifying those. But also, we need options for access by watercraft up to five metres to Frederick Henry Bay Beach. And I think that the dot points in the motion as it stands are too prescriptive. We actually need to look at it in a bigger picture way, if you like. So that's why I've used the word in the immediate vicinity of the Lordaile Canal. And also, we need to see what the costs are.
Sorry, Alderman Von Berta, you're out of time. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points. I think the speakers today have been quite illuminating, and certainly as one of the people that attended the meeting. I'm really glad that we could make the time to go out there, really. Really got a taste of how big the issue is out there. We get lots of emails from time to time on different things, and sometimes they can amplify an issue perhaps more than it really is. But if anything, this has been the other side, this is a really big touchstone issue. We need to not just rush straight away, and the essence of this motion is to get some options around the different piece abilities, that's really important. The ability to perhaps salvage some of the structure there and turn it into a viewing platform might be something that can be achieved. No council's perfect, and it hurts when mistakes are made or when in hindsight, you certainly would have done something differently. And the bottom line here is, it wasn't council money that was expended on this, it was rate payers' money, and it does hurt to see when we don't get it right like that. But we are where we are, and I think this is the best way forward, and I think a workable solution can be found, so I support the motion.
Other speakers? Roger Poirot, Alderman James?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief inasmuch as that the mayor, and also, I'd like to thank that Alderman Cusick obviously has been one of the key motivators in relation to this, and even Mr. Steinbauer had made the comment that Alderman Cusick has a knowledge of maritime matters, and therefore he's sort of led the charge in this respect, and also the rest of colleagues around the table. Having said that, the mayor did give assurance to the public meeting on the 17th, or whenever it was, can't remember since, weeks ago, that, yeah, that there would be some discussion at the workshop, and I sort of jumped in and said, look, we'll have a notice of motion on the agenda. And so I think the situation has got to the stage where council needs to do something, and I'm pleased that at least the 30th of November is in there. I had some concerns that the 30th of November might be sort of pushed further out. But given that if we can achieve what the motion is, together with Alderman Von Berto's comments, which is obviously going to provide the information that we need to be fully briefed, Mr. Mayor, in relation to this, then hopefully, I'd like to see personally an access to the beach before summer. Now, that is a big ask, but I think that if we get together and really look at the information that we are obviously going to receive in relation to this motion, then I think it's a win-win, not only for the council, but also for the residents of Lordaile. I see councils.
Thanks, Alderman James. So the motion before the chair is as listed in the agenda with three other points that were raised when the speaker spoke to the motion. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 10, 10.1, reports from single and joint authorities. I'd like to, the quarterly report rather, for the Southern Tasmanian Council's authority is pending for September. Coping refuses the Basel Site Joint Authority, Alderman Campbell.
The report has been circulated and will be dealt with in the conference meeting at the end of the meeting.
There's a summary in the agenda, the quarterly summary of meetings. Has Water Corporation, I'd like to table the 2016-2017 annual report.
Item 10.2, report from council and special committees and other representational bodies. I'd like to table the annual report for destinations of the Tasmanian. Are there any other reports?
Alderman here.
Mr. Mayor, I've got the minutes of the Business Export and Management Meeting from September.
Alderman Von Berta?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to table the minutes of the 18th of May 2017 of the Positive Aging Advisory Committee, as approved at our last meeting. And I'd also, just while on the Positive Aging Advisory Committee, like to note that we actually hosted, just recently, the second National WHO Age Friendly Cities Australia Forum. And it was a very successful forum, there were nine councils from across Australia, and we discussed a number of matters in relation to the life course spectrum and their associated services and infrastructure for community members of age. And we were very pleased to actually have the mayor there to open the proceedings, and also, we were very encouraged that he stayed for quite a period of time, bearing in mind your very busy schedule at this point in time. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta.
Give us a credit to council. The other minutes that I'd actually like to table are the Alma's Activities Centre Clarence, the minutes for the 8th of August meeting, as approved at our last meeting, and the Bicycle Steering Committee minutes, the 14th of August, as approved at our last meeting, too.
Thank you, Alderman. You certainly have been busy.
I have. And just to remind everyone, both Alderman and those people in the gallery, we actually have a ride to work, we have a ride to work event this Wednesday at 7:30. So if anybody would like to come to the lawns of the Clarence City Council with their bikes as you ride to work, you will be able to have a break. Thank you.
Are there any other reports to table? Alderman Thirley?
I have the minutes for the Belgrade Community Arts, but emailed to me late tonight, so I'll forward them on tomorrow. Thank you.
No other reports? Thank you. Item 11, 11.1, the information in the weekly briefing reports for 25th of September, 2nd and 9th of October, be noted. Alderman Campbell, thank you. Seconded, Alderman Von Berta. Sorry, Alderman Chong. Does anyone wish to raise issues in the weekly briefing reports? There being none, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.2, 11.2.1, a petition for one Cremorne Avenue, Cremorne, where petitioners be advised that council refused development application. Take Alderman Hume, seconded, Alderman Piers. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now advised, council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act. First item, 11.3.1, is a development application at 50 Bridge Street, Richmond, for winery signage. Alderman Campbell, thank you. Seconded. Alderman Douse? Alderman Campbell, would you like to speak to the motion? Alderman Douse? Other speakers? Okay, so I'll put the motion for approval with conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application at 4 Richardson's Road, Sandford, addition to existing outdoor building and outbuilding. I'll take Alderman Von Berto, seconded, Alderman Campbell?
No.
The other way around? Thank you. Speakers? Other speakers? Put the motion for approval, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3 is a development application at 61 Kelson Place, Acton Park, for a dwelling. Alderman McFarlane? Seconded, Alderman Campbell. Would you like to speak to it, Alderman McFarlane?
No, thank you.
Alderman Campbell? Other speakers? Motion is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.4 is a development application at 49 Pipe Play Lagoon, say again, Pipe Play Esplanade, Cremorne. Seconded, Alderman Piers. Speakers? Other speakers? Motion is for approval, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Next door, a development application at 52 Pipe Play Esplanade, Cremorne, for a dwelling. Alderman Campbell, seconded, Alderman Thirley. Speakers? Alderman Thirley, other speakers? Recommendation is for approval, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.6 is a development application at 14C, Bayside, Lordaile, for a dwelling and outbuilding. Seconded, Alderman McFarlane. Seconded, Alderman Hume. Speakers? Alderman James?
I have some difficulty with this application, and I would like to, first of all, draw Mr. Lovell's attention to page 98 of the report, of which it refers to, amongst other things, that the building be contained within the building envelope and in accordance with those plans, at a distance equal to the front setback, et cetera. But in paragraph two, it says, amongst other things, that the height of 3.3 metres above the natural ground level and the side boundaries in a distance of four metres, the near boundary to the building height of not more than 8.5 metres above the natural ground level, that's in the acceptable solutions. And it does not comply as the roof of the dwelling would protrude 0.8 metres beyond the building envelope, resulting in a maximum height of 9.3 metres and above the natural ground level. And then in the performance criteria, on page 99, in the second paragraph, it says the submitted diagrams show the overshadowing impact of the proposed dwelling would be most significant at 9am, et cetera. And half of the adjoining property to the west would be less than three hours. Now, having said that, Mr. Mayor, my question is to Mr. Lovell, my understanding, Mr. Lovell, that there has to be at least three hours of sunlight in winter solace in order to meet the acceptable solutions. But on page 99, it does say, as I've just referred to, that the shadow cast at 9am would be cast, sorry, would be cast approximately half of the adjoining for less than three hours. Could you please explain why we don't have a block of three hours in this case, which normally meets what I call the performance criteria of a winter solace meeting the acceptable solutions?
What we're saying is the response to the heading exists three hours. The shadow cast is less than three hours, therefore there is more than three hours of sunlight a day.
Hold up, Alderman James.
It just seems to me that there's been poor representations to this, and obviously the height... And obviously, the height of the building is over the limit, which we have, you know, known to be under the new Clarence interim planning scheme of being 8.5, which is the acceptable solution. This is 9.3 above natural ground level. And just the height alone is presumably to be referred to in the performance criteria. And the size and scale of a dwelling must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity for a reduction in sunlight in a habitable room, et cetera, et cetera, or an adjoining lot. It just seems to me that the height of this building is excessive and therefore, it's going to limit sort of the shadow of the sunlight that would be expected of a building which would, in my view, be of the standard of 8.5. This is the first time in recent times that we've actually had a building that succeeded the acceptable solutions. And the shadowing impact seems to have not caused any problems in relation to the excessive height. And I just can't really come to grips with that scenario when we have dealt with the height of a building, obviously, not exceeding 8.5. But then we've had the winter solace and the block of three hours, depending on what time of the day, as long as it's three hours in a block, block hours. I just can't, I just can't support this. I don't think it's...
Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Thirley.
I just note in the report on page 100, though, that the applicant has supposed to lower the roof, covering the upper level deck located on the northern elevation. And the lowering and redesign of the section of the roof encroaching beyond the building envelope is considered a reasonable attempt to respond to the primary concerns raised by the representatives and will reduce the overall height of the dwelling to 8.654 metres above natural ground level. And a permit condition is attached.
Thank you, Alderman Thirley. Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman McFarlane?
Just to note, Mr. Mayor, that the new planning scheme that I asked this question to the upper limits of height and beyond. The fact that this application didn't cause any overshadowing or lack of privacy. And where it did, it was given the conditions of opaque windows. It has covered itself under the scheme. So, within the performance criteria, it's taken the box.
So, the recommendation is approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thanks, Alderman Douse. We'll see what we can do. Item 11.3.7, development application at 42 Travasa Crescent, Tranmere, with access over 44.6 Travasa Crescent, for dwelling. Alderman McFarlane, seconded Alderman Hume, thank you. Speakers.
And the application, it's an internal block. It may cause some problems for some people, but at this point in time, it's the last one happening. It didn't seem to raise too many objections. And again, tick the box.
Alderman Hume. Other speakers? The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 7.3.8 is for a subdivision application at 312A Tremere Road for a 13-lot subdivision. Alderman Campbell. Seconded Alderman Thirley. Alderman Campbell. Alderman Thirley.
All the matters have been covered in the report. And I also note that the hours of construction are dealt with as well.
Other speakers? In the absence of any, the recommendation is for approval. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.9 is a development application at 78 Gilson Bay, Oireo Gilson Bay, for visitor accommodation. Alderman Von Berta and Alderman McFarlane, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish to move the officer's recommendation. And I actually believe that the conclusion that page 179 covers the reasons why very succinctly. And as it says, it considers that the proposal fails to meet the following performance criteria. Interim Planning Directive Number Two. And according to our report, that was actually passed by the Tasmanian Planning Commission, issued by the Tasmanian Planning Commission on the 1st of July 2017. And it relates to the exemption and standards for visitor accommodation and planning schemes. And so, in that interim planning directive number two, in that the development will be of a scale significantly beyond the dominant character and use and is likely to have a significant disadvantage to the other users of the access road. Also, clause 14.3.2 P1, clause 14.4.3 P1, and clause 14.4.3 P3, and clause 14.4.3 P4. So, it may cover the overdevelopment of the site, the height of the buildings and the location, and also the access. And I think it's important to note that the access road actually will detract from the landscape character and also there will be a number of conflicts of interest in relation to that access. So, on a number of counts, this development application should not actually be supported. And there needs to be considerable work done before it could come back to council to be considered a proposal.
Alderman McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Alderman Von Berto has discussed the refusal in context, I would like to speak to a broader vision, which was, in the context of the original local government, local government area plan, which was the first area plan that council took on board with regards to an area they saw unique in character, both from a historical point of view and a cultural point of view, for the Tasmanian Aboriginals. In looking at site plan for these units, I note that they are in the area where I personally have walked and have knowledge of Midas. And in the context of when we look at these sorts of development applications, we only ever look at the site in its current use, under its current zoning, without any context to the area as well, which I find really undermines our long-term strategic vision for our communities. This area has been, in the past, dedicated Aboriginal significance in the context that it was an area where they mined specific, not metals, stone off the cliffs for their tools. And in the process of that, they have painted caves down on the side of the cliff face. There were numerous archaeological digs in that area to collect and preserve what was left. And so, today, when we have an Aboriginal survey, they're not going to find anything much at all. And in reading the Aboriginal survey that was presented, again, it relates in the context of what's available on the site and what people can see, without taking on board the bigger picture that says, this is an area of high conservation, which is not only Aboriginal, but also environmental. The zoning before was landscape conservation, allowed a permanent house site off the side of the hill, in amongst the trees, down from the ridge line. This application goes against all of that, from my perspective. And I feel that this DA is playing with the precedent it looks for in looking at the environmental zone in a way that changes the planning scheme requirements. And again, like in other instances where we've seen them want to use discretion to make units smaller, to fix, that it changes the values and the intent of design. So, I support this refusal.
Alderman Douse?
Mr. Mayor, it suggests that the proposal is too intensive for the site, given the scale, visual impact, any impact of native vegetation, vegetation, fauna and habitat and traffic generation. Now, if you refer to the impression, visual impression advantage points one, two, and three, you can hardly find the development in the Australian part of it. The building homicide would become dark green, dark grey, blend with the surrounding environment. A fuller and finer assessment of what states of the proposed canon development is placed entirely within a non-threatening vegetation community. Are you right? Or are you wrong? Page 154 also specifies that the development have a minor effect on the priority vegetation of the stand view of the Swiss Galleine Line. If you refer to attachment four, it states, I quote, "The Policy and Conservation Advice Branch is satisfied that the impact to the threatened native vegetation goodies of proposed works would be minimal." Someone said it would upset the walrus. I got an email. And I mean, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of walruses and other fauna in the area. You only have to look at the amount of road children in the area to see what the population variation tends to be. The Aboriginal Heritage Assessment Report advises that the proposal will not impact on Aboriginal heritage sites. Page 156, performance criteria, loss of privacy, development is set in bushland and there is adjoining property at 60 metres from the site. There is no overshadowing. There's no commercial noise. Will be generated. Page 165 of the performance criteria says there is no, and there is no impact on natural values. The company comment states that the buildings are located to minimize the impact on natural values. Page 167, acceptable solution regarding vehicle access, passing areas, the proposal complies as regards to passing roads. The Traffic Impact Assessment Report advises that the proposal will not have a significant impact on traffic efficiency of Gilson Bay Road or Brazil in exceeding the threshold of the level of the service of the intersection of East Devon Island. Mr. Mayor, there is obviously a world to be read as support this development. I cannot support the officer's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, having been to this site, not for this particular application, but previously, there were major concerns about the access road. And the access road, there are attempts to improve access by providing some passing base. But the reality is, there's not enough passing base for the length of the road. Also, too, there is private usage of this road. And the person who has obviously access to that would be quite compromised in that respect. The other aspect is that the buildings themselves, the design and location of the building do not have due regard to the landscape. So, they haven't actually taken in, in regard to the slope, so that they have not enhanced the landscape at all. They have actually, haven't taken into account the geography at all. So, from that point of view, the application is hard to accept because of the bulk and the size of it compared to the actual size itself. And the road really, really concerns me. It is going to be unlit. The users of the road, when you think about it as visitor's accommodation, are not going to be familiar with the road. They're not regular users of that road. And it's unlit, it's narrow, it's not acceptable.
The officer's recommendation cites six performance criteria. And within each of those performance criteria, and there are even different points within them, where, well, it says that the report was actually prepared by an independent planning consultant. So, the consultant that prepared the report has identified those six performance criteria, where they believe that the development doesn't meet the requirements of the planning scheme. Now, if we, as a council, were to substitute a different recommendation, a different decision, and to go ahead and approve this development, we would actually have to put forward an argument, I believe, on all six of those criteria to say why we disagree with the consultant and why each of those complies. And I think that's a bit of a stretch. To be honest, if I was this developer and I'd seen this report, rather than letting it go forward to council, I would seriously consider withdrawing it and having another look at the proposal. It is unfortunate, because I do believe that visitor accommodation is something that, yeah, I would like to see a lot more of in our municipality. I think, you know, as a city, we have a lot more potential to have a much bigger slice in the visitor economy of Southern Tasmania. But like we've said with some other previous developments, this would be a good development for another place. It really isn't suitable for the site it's on and particularly for the environmental living zone and the character, the kind of character that that zone is meant to represent. Even just on the issue of road access with 66 vehicle movements a day. And I went for a walk up to that site one day and I had a look around and the road is basically a goat track. You know, it would need, it would need a significant improvement to be suitable for the number of vehicle movements that this, and safe vehicle movements that this development would generate. It is a seriously non-compliant development, doesn't set the character of the area. It would be a nice development, possibly in another location, if another location was available.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a huge, I suppose, matter for the public in the area, not only in the immediate vicinity, but also within the character or, I'll just say, the vicinity of Gilson Bay, even up to the northern sections of Kenton Road and beyond. And I say that because Government Hills has always been regarded as an area which needs to be preserved and available to the public. And there are instances there where I believe, and it's been documented, that Aboriginal activity, as far as living in the caves and also fishing in that area, and the walkway to those caves has been closed for some time by parks and wildlife because of the problems, obviously, of accessibility and so on. But having said that, I don't want to dwell upon the road access, because I can remember about 15, even 15 years ago, there was a huge outcry from residents in that area when council tried to do something about the road that was driven up the hill and basically put a star on the landscape. And obviously, that council could not do very much about it because of the nature of the development. And at the time, I think the planning scheme may have had some elements in relation to what the local planning authority could do in relation to that. But this actual development is out of Keegan Community of the area, there's no doubt about that. It has, the scale and form of the building is significantly beyond, which would be reasonably expected in the area. And also, too, the building height with regard to the ridge line. We've had a, over the years, we've had our skyline policy and that's all basically been incorporated within the, I suppose, the... uh, incorporated within a, the, um, uh, I suppose the, uh, different provisions of the planning scheme under Claritin from Planning Scheme 2015. But the nature of this development is going to cause significant impact upon the area which I put, I regard as a, a, a natural reserve, um, notwithstanding it's on private land, but nevertheless, all of that is part and parcel of Government Hills. And I have walked that area many times, I've even swum over in the, near the old fertile plant which is over in Shag Bay. Uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful area which needs to be preserved and obviously the people need to be able to, um, utilize it. I know this is outside that, it's actually part of the, a private development, but nevertheless, Government Hills has always been regarded as something that needs to be preserved and it's sort of its environmental, um, uh, uh, display. And that, I think, needs to be, uh, adhered to in relation to this. There are other areas which these sort of, this sort of development can be considered, and we did consider a similar, uh, development in, um, uh, in the vicinity of, um, Rist Vale, um, twelve, eighteen months ago, where we did, uh, make some considerations at the office's level for passing lanes in order to access, uh, traffic in and out of that particular site. And we gave it a tick in the box because it was within a, a hilly area, it was away from the sort of public visual or from, um, uh, you know, from direct impact upon the amenity of the area. I think this is a, an excellent motion, and I think that, uh, council should consider very carefully and support it accordingly.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I had a rate card taken around here, uh, on the track round there, and, uh, I think it, uh, I, as most people know, I love to see a bit of development, see people working, but I do agree with what the other alderman said, I just think this is good development, right in the wrong place, in the wrong place. And I've got to say that I agree with most of the other speakers here tonight, that, you know, somewhere else would be, you know, pretty good. But certainly in the wrong place, I do like that area a lot, and I just think this is totally out of keeping. And I've got to say, I, I totally agree with our office's report to pre-refuse.
It was very interesting to hear from Alderman Dowst. However, I feel that in this situation, he might have been a little bit selective in terms of what he quoted from the report. I think it's really important to note that under section four point two, compliance with zone and code, that it's clearly spelt out where this development does not actually meet the performance criteria. And there is actually areas involved, this is quite unusual for a report, uh, as was said, it's been done by an independent consultant. So it actually makes very clear, under each of the performance criterion, the reason why it's been suggested that it doesn't meet the performance criterion, and that is involved. So I think it's well worth looking at those bolded sections to see right throughout the report why this development application should be refused in relation to it not meeting the performance criteria.
Motion for a chair is for refusal. For those in favour, against? Motion's carried, and that completes our business as planning authority. Moving on to, uh, eleven point four, customer service, eleven point four point one, community support grants that council approves grants to community groups and organizations that visit, all the candidates, second aldermen peers, speakers. All in peers.
Hey, can I just ask one question of the general manager? I, I like the application for the Lions Club of Crans. Now, it's for installation, maybe installation at the Harrow Community Centre, which myself and Alderman Chong are on the committee there. Now, I understand we're giving a grant to the Lions Club to put this screen in the sunshine room, and that sounds very nice, but I'm not quite sure, and I meant to ring up about this, but I'm not quite sure that while we've given the Lions Club a grant to put it in a room where we're under centre, we pay a manager, why don't we just put in a thing in and then there's no argument and anybody can use it? I support the recommendation, but I do have a bit of trouble to think we give a money which is our centre, why don't we just put the screen in and then it's ours?
Um, through, Mr. Mayor, I suppose my answer to that would be that council in their agreement with the management committee has, um, certain basic obligations, and anything that goes beyond that basic obligation is, is a requirement for the tenant. Some of that will be in terms of the detail of fit out. Now, in this instance, they've made application for additional fit out than what we would normally provide as, as the landlord. Um, uh, in doing so, they've made an application for our, um, community grants program, it's been assessed as meeting the criteria and needs in terms of broad community use, therefore it's recommended for a grant.
It's got here, now this is where, this is where I just want to be careful. Uh, they've been able to offer its use to other potential groups. Now, is that part of this condition or not, in writing or anything like that?
One of the conditions of grant that would have been assessed, and I'm not privy to the actual documentation, but the, the process that went through would have made a judgment as to, or needs to be satisfied that it was going to meet broader community use, because that's one of the criteria for grant eligibility. So obviously, the assessment panel has been satisfied that that criteria wasn't met.
Other speakers, Alvin, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just had a question, there were two, um, volunteer fire brigades that, uh, applied for equipment, UHF radios, and we agreed to partial, or what, sorry, the recommendation is to agree to partial funding of them. I am just curious as to why that equipment, um, hasn't been provided by the Tasmanian Fire Service, because that would be the expectation that volunteer fire brigades would... And, uh, you know, while, while I see the benefit and I'm happy to, to, um, support the recommendation, I, I do think that, um, that's something the fire service should probably be providing.
Well, it's a bit of both. Uh, sorry, um, I don't disagree, but I don't know the answer as to why it's not provided.
Paulman James.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. On, um, the community grants, uh, relation to the Motor Yacht Club of Tasman Incorporated, uh, their request was for acquisition of a AD fibrillator, fibrillator, uh, for the MG Ageria. Uh, I'm interested to know, and perhaps the general manager can answer this for me, um, the first line under which I think is tamed to the, uh, the committee, the assessment committee that obviously does this on behalf of council. It says, "While supporting the need for defibrillators to be available throughout the community, the grant assessment panel felt that as the ML Ageria is still used in the traditional role as the governor's launch, this perch, purchase should not be in the realm of council to fund." So through you, Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Paul, is it true that this is basically, well, this vessel is available at, for the governor to use as is the need to open water activities and so on and so forth? Or is it now basically being provided for everybody in the community to use, provided they have the funds to be able to pay for its, its, uh, its use? Could you see, could you provide...
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the answer to both those questions is yes. Uh, the Ageria was formerly the, the governor's launch, was owned and operated by Tasports, um, a number of years ago, now they were looking for a home for it. Uh, and I think the, we facilitated the acquisition of it by the Motor Yacht, Yacht Club of Tasmania, I think, for the princely sum of one dollar. Uh, and that, that they have an obligation to maintain whatever the vessel. Uh, the council, I think, made a contribution, has made a couple of contributions over the years towards the maintenance of the vessel. It is available for broader public hire use and on a, I say on a semi-commercial basis. Um, it was felt by the assessment panel, just a miscircumstance, that the, um, in terms of, uh, funds available and priority, that this was a lesser ask than some of the other asks, particularly given the commercial nature of, of potential, or partial commercial nature is what I'm trying to say, of the, of the vessel, that, um, this wasn't a, a high priority.
It does say in here that many of these charters consist of groups of elderly citizens who because of their age could be subject to sudden illness, et cetera. So obvious, if that happened, then, uh, obvious, there may be some remote chance that, that since it's now available to all in Sundry and particularly it would seem to, uh, the elderly, that, uh, by not providing a, uh, defibrillator for this vessel, which is now the use of the community as distinct from the governor's sole use, as it was, then, uh, isn't there an obligation on us as, um, as a sort of a goodwill gesture to provide this in, in relation to... You have made the point, Paulman James, I guess I'm, I'm going to ask you, are you going to move an amendment to the recommendation or...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to include that as part of it. So you have no objection, but I don't know if this is...
No, but I'll take it you are moving, but that, that grant we agreed to along with the rest of it.
I would like to...
Which one? This is on...
This is for the...
Best off point under two point six.
Uh, a defibrillator for the motor launch at UAM. Um, do we have a second up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, does that mean if, if that is supported, something has to go out, or are we just adding extra funds?
Just added on.
Would you, would you, um, for the next grant?
All right, uh, in the absence of a se- second up? You'll second that? So, um, does anyone want to speak to the amendment that we include the, the defibrillator for the motor launch at UAM? Alderman.
Um, I'd just like to ask a question, uh, what, what's the total amount to be of the budget for the year?
We, we generally have two rounds of the budget, so there will be a small, this is round one, so there will be a small amount left. But I do know that with, with the recommendations here, we'd be allocating well over half of the available funds. But that just means you have a smaller round next time, that's... Well, we generally have a second round in February, March and November.
Um, I, I do, Mr. Mayor, I, I must express a bit of unease with, you know, the, the panel with the detail that they go through this, um, in making a decision to add something that's not recommended for inclusion on the fly. Um, if we, if we are going to, um, adopt an alternative recommendation, I wouldn't be comfortable with doing so, um, without, uh, deferring this to a workshop for further discussion. So as such, I will be, um, opposing the amendment. If there was, if there was a motion to, um, give this recommendation for, for consideration, I'd be happy to support that, but otherwise, I'm happy to support the, um, the recommendation of the amendment.
Yeah, look, I'm probably going to, um, not support the amendment, but I'm really in two minds. I guess where this comes, and, and there is a little bit here of, um, groundhog day around this, and I think part of that is because where do we get to discuss this? We get to discuss this, if at all, at the briefings almost before us. Um, perhaps there might be some merit in actually making this process inclusive of the workshop process so that we've got time to digest it and ask the questions, um, rather than really being left generally with just the briefing being the place that it gets discussed if at all.
Um, I, I think...
Oh, sorry, you were the second up to the amendment?
Yeah, I haven't spoken.
So, um, I mean, you will get an opportunity to talk again later, yeah. Uh, other speakers to the amendment. In that case, uh, there's no right of reply to my amendment motion, so I'll put the motion that, um, that the acquisition of the defibrillator for the Ageria... All those in favour? Against? Carried. Uh, sorry, lost. So we're back to the original motion, and I'm willing to take the speakers on the original motion again. Paulman James has spoken. Paulman Thirley, did you wish to speak? To the, to the motion that we, uh, adopt the recommendation.
I need to say that I'm disappointed that the last motion didn't get through.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and the reason for that is because the same criteria has been used in, in that, um, as, as, um, compared to the Lindisfarne itself, and, um, one gets them, one doesn't, based on elderly people.
Any other speakers? Paulman James. Sorry, uh, hmm, yeah, okay.
That was the amendment, of course. Yeah, I can speak to the substantive motion, that's right. I, I think there is merit in relation to Alderman Walker's comment in that, I know we have established this, the officers go through this process of following the guidelines set up by the, um, the, the committee. Uh, but at the same time, you know, surely, and I'm trying to hit, to find a way in which we can have input without, rather of bogging the system down and therefore throwing it into chaos if we do have a meeting before it comes to council for ratification. So I'm, I'm conscious of that, but there must be some mechanism that we can establish where, even if it's in the form of a, um, uh, a briefing report, that could be identified as part of the process leading up to council making a decision of, at the last time, at the last moment.
Yeah, I, I, I think the key to this, uh, the agenda papers come out with a list in there, uh, we have a chance to cover it at the Friday briefing, and I'd be curious if we had any acquisities at that moment rather than on Monday night. Um, any other?
Yeah, I will speak to this, um, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor. Yep, but I, I again, um, the briefing process is, is a process we were going through, an agenda of this size, and quite frankly, the officers are not always there that are the specific officers that have done the detail stuck around this. And so what am I envisioning? I'm just envisaging a Q and A to get some comfort around it. So I will be supporting the motion as it's before us because, uh, I wouldn't want to deprive any of these other very worthy, um, successful applicants of their funding, so I'm supporting it. But, um, reflagging that I don't, I don't have comfort in the fact that it's the only time that we really get to talk about it, it's the briefing time.
Paulman Murtagh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with you, in fact, I do agree with you, not tend to, uh, that this is actually before us from when we get our agenda on Wednesday evening. And even if we can't attend the briefing on Friday, and I understand that there are aldermen who aren't able to do that for all sorts of different reasons, there is always the opportunity to actually provide an alternative motion to all of the aldermen via email, uh, perhaps earlier in the evening. But I think that to actually have this presented to us, as someone just said, on the fly, is rather disconcerting, because I actually believe that the panel has all of the information, actually looks at the criteria and makes a considered recommendation. And therefore, to actually overturn that at the last moment, I believe is rather disconcerting for the panel. So with that in mind, uh, I actually believe that the recommendation should stand.
Look, I sense that there's, uh, some interest in the Ageria having one of these defibrillators and perhaps the staff who have passed that fact that it is the next round, as, as maybe it can come up again. Paulman Chong.
It's just very briefly, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with the comments that have been made that, um, this, this has, it's a process that has been followed, and I think it's... made that, um, this, this has, it's a process that has been followed, and I think it's important that that process is followed. There's obviously some confusion about how exactly these grants get allocated and the criteria that are used, and perhaps it would be useful in our weekly briefing reports that those criteria are given out to the Aldermen again so that they can have a look at what criteria are used and how this process is done.
Any other speakers? Right of reply, Paulman Campbell, I think you started this.
Yes, I did, unfortunately, uh, unfortunately. Uh, next round, uh, it can be looked at again, but, uh, Alderman Chong himself did go to breakfast, uh, with the Heart Foundation and the Premier here two or three weeks ago, and there is a, a demand for these, uh, defibrillators all around the state and the location of them and the priorities, and, uh, I think if we're gonna proceed with it, we can get that professional advice from the Heart Foundation, it's only a phone call, and if they came back and, uh, were to give it to the Modi opub to substantiate their, their request, then we'd be on the right track.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation for grants as listed, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to asset management, eleven point five point one is the Canopus Centauri Bushland Reserve Activity Plan that we adopted, plan with minor changes. Uh, thank you, Alderman Farm, second up, Alderman Von Berta, would you like to speak to it, Alderman Farm?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I note that in the, um, issues and comments from the responses to advertisement of the plan, that there has been some comment on issue seven, the, um, the reserve would be an ideal location for a pilot cat control exercise, and I would like to, um, promote that. Uh, recently I was walking on the boardwalk and what did I see but a beautiful grey cat, um, down on the pontoon talking to the ducks. They were conveniently going into the water and it left very disillusioned with life. However, it was a very well-fed cat, so it was, uh, a good example of how cats just like to play, and within the context of these areas which are natural bushlands, getting a pamphlet out to the local, um, residents about cat management, I think we should look at again having areas dedicated as cat control areas where we put out traps and cats, Alderman traps, then people there too, you know, uh, look at how they're gonna keep their cat inside because here in the city we've got no controls at all, and even though the state government hasn't fulfilled its role in finalizing that legislation yet, not that I know of unless the general manager can tell us anything, no, that we look to just promoting our own, um, future management control. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Von Berta.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my comments are really underwhelming after that very evocative comment from Alderman McFarlane, just to say that there were nine written responses, and of those, even though those responses were very considered, it appears that we only need two additions to the draft reserve activity plan, so I believe that we've actually done a pretty thorough job in relation to it. Thank you.
Other speakers? So the motion is that we adopt the plan with several minor changes, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point five point two is the Seven Mile Beach Sport and Active Recreation Precinct for a revised master plan. Paulman Furley, thank you, second up. Alderman here, Paulman Furley, would you like to speak to it?
Just that what's before us is an amendment to the original plan, and the amendment seemed quite, uh, justifiable. The main AFL oval is moved from the eastern side to the centre, the original AFL proposed oval is replaced with multi-purpose sports fields, and the sports pavilion located to allow for future development, which is, is great, of indoor sports facilities because we, we have an expanding use for those, and outdoor netball and tennis court, fantastic. Uh, we don't really have a prominent face in netball on this side of the river, so it's actually, um, a nice addition to the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this proposal's a, a long time coming, still has a long way to go, um, but with a, uh, state election coming up soon, I'm, uh, hoping that maybe someone might, might be able to throw some dollars its way.
The other speakers, Alderman Pierce.
Yeah, I think we're missing a great opportunity here. Here we are, we're gonna have Twin Ovals, may take some time, and yet we are putting the main sports pavilion to the left, not in the middle. Now, if you've been reading the Mercury, that the AFL and the government want the Twin Ovals to be a home of, a prac-, a practice match down at Twin Ovals. Now, if you've never been at Twin Ovals, there's two ovals like this, even though they're different levels, the main change room and it's got here, the main change room and their social room near Twin Ovals, is in the middle, so you can be in one and you can see both grounds, what's going on on both grounds. To me, having the main centre, change room, social room, two hundred seat social room, mind you, it's not a small one, commercial kitchen, administrating meeting room, to one side and not in the middle of two, I believe we're missing a damn great opportunity here. I really believe that. I believe once these are built, they've just got prospects for everything, and I think if we go down that track, we're just limiting things. Now, I don't know how to, to change this tonight, but jeez, I hope we revisit it because I just think we're just gonna lose out. I think if we can say, you know, as Alderman Newham said, election's coming up, I think if, if we can say, look, that's our facility, very much like the Twin Ovals, it's got that much prospect for future, future games, future sports, not only football, soccer, rugby, anything. I just think we're missing out on a chance to make this ground great by footing those, that area right to the left of the oval. I just wanna see it in the middle where that ground can be used and people can see things from both grounds, because at some stage, I dare say, we'll have two sports going on at the same time. What the Twin Ovals do, and I think that's what we should be doing here, I think we're gonna miss a great opportunity if we don't do it.
Other speakers? Paulman James.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, responses, uh, received on page, uh, two seventy-seven, there was a majority of people in favour of the revised master plan, and the breakdown is shown on the page, you know, thirty supportive, fifteen supportive with concern, so forty-five, and then not supportive eighteen, so obviously that percentage speak, or percentage speak for themselves. Um, there has been a, um, an email from Ian Milne that has brought our attention to the fact that under the original master plan, there was to be, um, a walking area, uh, dedicated, obviously, dog area as part of the, the final master plan, and, uh, and that doesn't appear to have been included as per Drew Point by providing a dual fence around the perimeter and the stormwater pond. Also, there's concerns been raised about the impact of lighting systems for the sports grounds on local residents. Now, my, my concern, I suppose, is that you could say that on the revised master plan, you've only, you've only got, um, uh, well, as I say, forty-five versus eighteen, and that speaks for itself in a sense, but, uh, we tend to go ahead and have a master plan and then we seek additional information from other user groups, which buffs up that plan and then it may detract or take away from what the people originally thought was a, was the, the alternative for the, for the area. And we see it happening in many instances down in Kangaroo Bay where we have a master plan and then we have a revised master plan, and the revised master plan, in this particular instance, um, there was, um, that several attendees did not or choose not to sign the attendance sheet, okay, so we're talking about how many people were there or how many, what percentage of those people that were there were in favour and so on and so forth. So, look, I, I, I know that we are, we need to have a facility like this, and the, uh, the sporting precinct is gonna be cost about fourteen million, and, okay, we're going to put a submission in, in, uh, early in two thousand and eighteen to seek federal, regional, uh, grants for this proposal, but at the end of the day, um, I would like to see that the people in that area are happy with this large development, and the revised master plan is in fact the better option for those residents in Seven Mile Beach who have to live and obviously enjoy the, uh, environs in that area, as distinct from people outside and at Sorrel and obviously further afield that will be using these AFL facilities. But it, it just seems to me that we, we might be going too fast, too soon, and, uh, we ought to scale it back to basically what was proposed in the original master plan and not aim for the heights of this large-scale development when in fact the, the purpose of being able to, uh, attract this sort of funding may be beyond our, our, our reach. I just don't feel comfortable about this.
Thank you, Paulman James, other speakers? Take Alderman Von Berta and then Alderman Farm.
Through you, question to the officers, why, I, I know at the workshop that Alderman Pierce brought up the fact of having the stadium where it is and perhaps that it should be moved, I can't remember the reason why it is not in the middle.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, my recollection is, and the response when I asked the question was, that it was felt that it was, uh, better to try and create one premium facility well-serviced by a ma-, by a significant pavilion rather than try and serve two masters and both pavilions with a compromised development. That was the rationale that was given. Whether that, whether, you know, you accept that or not is another matter, but that was the rationale that was given for why it was designed the way it is.
So.
But the problem is, if I'm asking.
You won't begrudge me your question.
Um, is it at this stage that we definitely need to make a placement of where the stadium is actually placed, or can it be at the next stage when the more detailed design work is done that we can look at?
Um, if, if, if you, if you're of a mind that you want to change your mind, I think now's the time to do it, and I say that in the sense that signing up on this tonight will be what guides the development of the, the planning application and the like. Now, if that goes forward in this manner and then at some point in the future you decide you wanna relocate the pavilion, that would necessitate going through that process again, because I think that would be deemed to be a significant change, wouldn't it, Ross?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I would urge you to sign up on something you're happy with. Um, sorry, rather, if you're not happy with it, not sign up on it, if you know what I mean, but I, I suppose I'd, I'd rather get an indication from you now because we need to move quickly on this one way or the other, so if you want it changed, I think I need to get that message tonight as rather than a couple of months' time.
Alderman McFarlane, Alderman Walker?
Um, well, I'm not happy with that either, because in talking to certain manager, I was advised that, you know, the, the, the concerns that I had on Friday haven't changed, and since then Alderman would have received an email from the president of the Tengara Trail, so there is a need for extra discussion with regards to the Tengara Trail, and it is in regard to the fact that I stated on Friday that I didn't feel the area that was dedicated was big enough, that they actually would like to retain the sand tracks they're using down there and not the shared track, because the shared track, um, is causing some problems in other areas, and that would in its own way actually make their access area much smaller because the dedicated area along the side with the buffer zone is thirty metres wide across the tracks. Now, that could then facilitate the separate track for the horses, but the top access, which is a twenty metre wide buffer zone, will create conflict in the long run, I doubt they'll ever use that, but in the meantime, there were, there was another, um, circuit track, it might well be the fact that it is the exercise circuit that was being discussed with them because the comments to me were that it was gravel, that some horses can handle that and others can't. So I would like to see further investigation and discussion, uh, in response to the email from the Tengara Trail. I think also that the topic about the pavilion has some merit, and quite frankly, I agree with Alderman Pierce that this is going to be the future for these recreational sports, and I think we shouldn't leave ourselves short of making sure that it has and is exactly what we want it to be, because I don't overly remember talking about the pavilion, but I think that a pavilion between two fields has, has a degree of convenience from my perspective.
Look, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a really crucial future project as far as the city grows, as far as its strategic location, um, it's a big deal. So I'm in a little bit of discomfort at the moment because, um, we wanna be able to take this to market, to prospective suitors of different colours as we come towards March, and we wanna be able to do so and just look them in the eye and say, council is, this is council's thing, this is what council believes is the way to go, we have had the community consultation and we've, we've owned, we've owned our things. So, um, I'm finding myself in a place, again reinforced by some of, to a degree of what some of Alderman James has said and also what Alderman McFarlane has said, and on top of that, noting that the general manager has urged us that if we want to make changes, we, we better do it before we lock into something that we're going to actually put as a development application. I would be suggesting that I probably won't vote for this as it stands this minute, and should it fall over, I'd be moving a motion of deferral probably per one meeting.
Yeah, okay, so that's a foreshadowed motion rather than a, rather than a procedural type of motion. Um, the other alternative the meeting's got, uh, if it wishes to consider this as a procedural motion, that we defer pending a workshop. If someone gets.
We're gonna concede your motion, yeah.
Okay, so we have a mover, seconded Alderman Pierce, the motion is that it be deferred, uh, one meeting or pending a workshop?
If it's, if it, if it isn't, then it's another one, but let's, let's, let's aim for one, let's try and.
Can I just ask a question, will that interfere with the preparation for, for trying?
The answer is it may, but that's.
More, it's more important.
It's more important we get the right decision rather than meet the timeframe.
Okay, so the motion is we defer it one meeting pending a workshop, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you, had a good discussion there. Um, eleven point five point three is a tender for the annual hard waste collection service to remove Alderman Campbell that we, uh, authorised the GM to now negotiate directly with Biola and, uh, Hornix Park Waste Control Station. Seconded Alderman Von Berta, um, you wish to speak to it?
The board, the, the general manager, the bit on, the quicker the better.
The general manager can put on the quicker the better.
Alderman Von Berto, other speaker to you.
Mr Mayor, I just would like to emphasise how important the annual hard waste collection is. It's become part of our strategy over the years and it's become an important focus on the residents that council does undertake. My concern is that is that if the general manager is unable to lock a tender or a, I suppose the word is...
Provider? A provider?
A provider, is probably the better word to use. A provider. Then I didn't hear it mentioned that it could be deferred. Now, under no circumstances I believe this should be deferred. Okay? Okay, I know that's really putting the pressure, I know.
No pressure.
The GM has brought our attention to the fact that it's going to...
May cost us noodles. That's taken the pressure right off.
I know, I know, but I know, I know and I can be accused, I can be accused, I can be accused of saying, okay, what did he happen? He supported additional funding for the annual hard waste collection and what does he do? He doesn't vote for the rates as he did all right players. Or, I'm trying to have a dollar... Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm trying to have a dollar each way on this and I can also understand the general manager has an enormous task ahead of him to try to pull this off. But I would like to say that we must pull it off and have our annual collection as we always have.
Please, the manager's a handballer.
Other speakers? Rather than follow on with him. So, the motion is as recommended, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. That concludes asset management. There's nothing other financial or governance, so I'd still question time. No matters on notice, questions without notice, so I think it's time to start with Alderman Von Berto.
Mayor, I'm wondering whether or not there is any possibility of us finding a funding source to help us in responding to a couple of queries from rate payers in relation to Doran's Road and the redevelopment of that road and...
Through you, I would quite strongly suspect that the only funding source is council budget. Now, of course, you can amend that budget at any time by absolute majority if you so wish. What I have asked the staff to do is to prepare a detailed design and estimate for that subset, we can consider it as soon as that is done. It is a fair task however in terms of preparing an accurate design and estimate for it given the nature of the terrain and as I understand it, the amount of fill and whatever that would be required to overcome the issues identified. We did many years ago make a land acquisition to facilitate this, but it's never actually been funded in terms of, and I'm not talking about the entire construction of Doran's Road, I'm talking about just that section, but I have asked for a design and costing to be done. As soon as that's done, we'll bring it back to a workshop for discussion.
Is no possibility under the black spot programme, for instance?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I don't think there is on the basis that I'm, I think I'm pretty sure in saying that there's no recorded accident history that we can rely on. I'm not saying there hasn't been accidents, but I don't think that there's a recorded black spot accident history. You may know more? I'm reasonably, my memory serves me correctly, big call. I'm pretty sure that I was told in the last week or so that there is no recorded accident history there that would meet the test for black spot funding. And I think also the traffic volume whilst it's probably reasonable is probably a benefit cost ratio for black spot funding, probably wouldn't meet the test either. If we did have an accident history, it's very little chance.
I'm here.
I've got two questions, but could I just, this is one of my questions actually. In the corner of my window, I was talking about Doran's Road. Now, why can we not reduce the speed limit straight away? And the accident, Mr Towns, I spent him today, he's innocent father of another accident. But he also said to me today, he said, that car, because you could hear it coming, and he said to his wife, there's going to be an accident here.
I think sort of in a sense, you've answered your own question, is irrespective of what the speed limit is, people will travel at the speed that they wish to travel at.
So, what was the second question? We're at the Phil Tanna Bowls Club the other day, they emailed me and said they've sent two letters, they've got an option on their lease, a ten-year option, they've sent two letters to council regarding resigning their lease and they haven't got any reply as such.
I've got an email today from them and I've advised them and sought a merial response. So, there'll be a formal response go back within ten working days.
Hayfield Street and I'm getting a lot of complaints and it does seem to be that we must be so far behind because nothing seems to get done day after day after day. Now, I'm not saying, you know, someone's spooked, but the question is why are we so far behind the world? We are, we certainly are.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman Delft. Alderman here?
I've got two questions. First one is on the Seven Mile Beach master plan that we just deferred, when that does go to the workshop, can we invite the consultants to address us because I'd really like to get some expert advice on what the pros and cons are of moving that pavilion. Second question is, I'm interested in the process for the consultation around strategic alliance shared services within the Greater Hobart area and would it be possible to get a report on what the possible scope would be for that alliance? You know, what sort of services can be shared? And I'd also be interested if such a report can be provided, whether we could, what the scope is to include the city deal process into that as well.
Whilst I understand the thrust of the question and whatever, matters like that that are calling for fairly detailed reports are generally the subject of a council resolution as distinct from just a question being asked at the council table. I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think it's a, I think in terms of precedent going forward, it probably needs a council imprimatur calling for a major report as distinct from just a question.
Can I clarify, Mr Mayor, rather than a detailed report, maybe even just a basic summary?
I can provide an update on where that's at at the moment.
My dear, probably wouldn't be a bad strategic signal to our sister metrory councils if we called for such a report.
Alderman, Tom.
Two questions. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The first one is, silly question, any luck finding a stolen play, you couldn't? Have we heard anything more about that stolen property?
Through you, not to my knowledge, we haven't, I haven't certainly been advised that we've found it.
Well, that's a bit sad, isn't it? Very expensive play, you went into lose. The second one, perhaps more seriously, of the audit panel, it came up that we had not yet received our audit certificate and sign up from the auditor general. Could please update us on the status of that and if it's still outstanding, what we need to do about it?
Firstly, I would say that our audit certificate is still outstanding. In terms of what we can do about it, we can nearly by this stage seek or encourage Copping and the Office of the Auditor General to reach agreement over the finalisation of the Copping consolidated order. My understanding is that they are very close to finalising that and reaching agreement. I would like to emphasise, given that I'm on the public record here, that the deputy auditor general did attend the council's audit committee meeting and assured the audit committee that there was no problems with council's audit or financials and that he expected to issue a detailed audit certificate in, at that stage, in a matter of a week or so, well, that's two weeks now. But he did indicate that there was certainly no issues to be concerned about. The only reason that was preventing the issue of the council audit certificate is our accounts must state the share of our equity in the Copping authority and until the Copping authority accounts are finalised and signed off, we can't determine, have that one line of what our equity is in our accounts. Similar issue was also affecting Kimbra, Sorrell and Tasman, all of the constituent owner councils of the Copping authority. But my understanding is the issue with the authority is close to resolution, that there are now just some technical matters around having to recalculate taxation implications for the restating of the government grant in the Copping accounts and that's what it all relates to. It's not around issues of any real financial concern, it's merely how the accounts are stated to comply with the new accounting regulations. But I believe there has been agreement reached between Copping Authority, the auditor general and the auditor general's agent as to how that's to occur and it's just the mechanics around that and I'm still hopeful that we'll have an audit certificate within, certainly for me to table at the next council meeting. I'm hopeful.
Can I offer a follow-on before? When do we need to buy to meet regulatory requirements?
Off the top of my head, we need it pretty soon because we are required to table our accounts at the annual general meeting or present our accounts to the annual general meeting and in presenting the accounts, we need an audit certificate. So, we are getting pretty close to the point where we're going to have to start thinking about if we don't receive it delaying some things. Again, they're more procedural than matters that will cause, you know, necessitate changes to accounts or anything of that nature. But I think the other thing, Mr Mayor, that we should is, we should just, and I know you and I have discussed this, is that we would be proposing just to write to the minister, advising him of the lateness of our accounts, reassuring him that everything's in hand, but it's just a technical delay by virtue of waiting for a consolidation of another entity's accounts.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Well, I'd like to get that letter out as a matter of priority, please. Alderman Farlane?
My first question is, could we have an update on the road closures that were flagged with the car vehicles because there was a car burning up on the hill? So, they must be getting through that way still.
Through you, Mr Mayor, we got the approval came through from the Transport Commissioner on Friday, so we can now begin to act on that.
Second question is, there's a lovely deep pothole in between the bus stops on Goodwood's Road, it's getting deeper and deeper.
I'll take that as an all request. Alderman Carr?
Two questions, update please from Mr Graham on the Lordedale toilet canal and the jocktop one because this is... Also, two a letter went out from Armend to the local residents down in South Armagh Possum Bay area indicating that the project was still, was on track. It mentioned the fact that the key priority is water coming from Blackman's Bay. It mentioned council in the sense that it was hoping to have support and cooperation from council. I just wondered what that form take?
Through, Mr Mayor, I haven't had a discussion with them for many, many, many months, but the discussion last time I had with them was they were, I should say, inquiring as to whether there was any prospect of council making a contribution to that and I indicated that it was very highly unlikely.
At the last meeting, I posed a question to the general manager regarding twitch in Lordedale and I handed a scribbled account of what I thought was going to be followed up and I had received an answer and the answer was along the lines that there's no twitch in Balook Street. My question was in fact in Bengali and it was sort of an annual sort of thing.
That's what the question now is, basically.
The question is, is it wasn't specifically related to Balook, it was in relation to the main streets within Lordedale and as to whether there is a possibility of an annual spraying that could be undertaken to obviously handle twitch, which is starting to actually penetrate the actual council footpath. So, my question, Mr Mayor, is in fact a greater surveillance in relation to Lordedale and that's distinct from Balook. That's the first question.
Through you, Mr Mayor, perhaps I might be, except I might be wrong, but I thought the document you provided to me in the last meeting actually identified a specific location. None can be found at that location. I think the response that went back to you was, we can't find it, can you be more specific as to where it was? So, if you can give me those details as to where it is, I can follow that up.
Another question through you and save it to Mr Graham, he's in the corner there. Mr Graham, it has been mentioned in the past in relation to the road or road reconstruction of Pass Road and one of the comments from the staff has been that, look, they, council people would like people to use the South Armah Highway as distinct from taking the faster route through Pass Road. My question through you to yourself, Mr Graham, is that are you able to provide an upgrade, cost of upgrade of Pass Road or is that dependent upon Perrinville and a couple of other developers in the area contributing to the frontage section of Pass Road before there is any reconstruction of the entire length of Pass Road?
Through you, and road reservation's quite narrow on Pass Road for us to create that.
Well, that brings us to a close meeting. So, to our long-suffering single member of the public, thank you for your attendance. So, that was Move Alderman Peers, seconded Alderman New, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.